Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you all for being here. I apologize for being this late. It is currently three thirty. Do we have any?
Yeah.
No public comments today? So we'll dive right in and discuss any regular meeting agenda out of staff council. Anybody have anything? We need to discuss? Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes. I don't know whether. Items four and five on the regular agenda. I just have something. That I would like to. Add. If if they were to pass. And I maybe other people with the other council members can feel the same way, but. I don't want Kathy to knock me out of my seat up there. So should should we? Talk about the the language or? Do it there or what you want?
The. I well, I think Brian is about to go through.
Perfect.
All of those, and then we can talk about.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to. Thank you, Tim.
All right, so.
Oh, why did you say to me?
No, but. So still relatively new. And but I'm I'm glad you all find this useful because it's good to have this. Brief conversation in the workshop, answer these kind of questions. So the first zoning item. Now, which I guess is number five is the RV park at Route three sixty-three, and we spent. A decent amount of time talking about that. Special called worked up a week ago. Uh, Mr. Deckman is the case manager, so he's going to give a. Uh, a brief presentation, a little, a couple more slides than this, but. Uh, this is second reading, and so just a reminder, it was first reading. Uh, which does not obligate you to approve it the second time and. Uh, but. They have agreed to incorporate some of the elements that were discussed. And so here you see the site plan. And of course. I think look in the top left-hand corner. Just a reminder that Middle Road. It it's so it's not direct access off of. The loop. They actually already are essentially reserving. Others, uh, future. Developable space right here. So that's not something that we had to ask them to do, plus at this stage of design. So that would have been challenging to be able to. Uh, request that, but they're already doing that. And this is for a hundred and fifty units. Were spaces, you know, and they're. They're meeting the RV park standards, including. The minimum, the eight percent recreational area. They'll have trails. Uh, and other amenities, and you can see. The dark green space that does not include. Septic area detention areas that are not eligible. You know, because I think that question came up, and we looked back at it to. Make sure that that that's not, they're not counting that area, and they're not. Because the utilities are. Uh, it are exceptions, or they're they're not eligible. Uh, utility areas for recreational areas. So that's that's good that we have that in code. And also, just in terms of fencing, they would, they have a six-foot privacy fence. Um, around the perimeter, but also. Eight-foot. Fence around the septic and detention areas, just to. Uh, keep that, you know, mainly for safety purposes. They would also construct acceleration, deceleration lanes. On the loop. And so that's. That's huge. I know we spent a decent amount of time talking about that. And then lastly, just to point out. They've also agreed to construct an all-weather road at the secondary entrance. So down here, which. You know, that would be for emergency access. And that also is into the future area to be developed that they don't have any plans for. Right now. So. That's really it in a nutshell. Any questions about? That one?
I did, Brian. You have the septic. Sites up there.
Yes.
Have a conversation about them bringing water underneath. So loop and over to the other side or?
No, no, I asked Jason because I was not here.
Um, where they're going to bring waters over there off hook. And you can barely see it on the thumbnail. Um, well, is this just the top three slides, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, I can. Go to the the full presentation if necessary. But you can see, I'll walk up there.
That's not necessary. I just wanted to.
Or we can pull that slide and.
Well, I can.
Twenty now and five o'clock.
Right here is Lavendusky. Where that comes across, there's water stubs out in this area. So their plan is to come across. And then come up. And it was, I measured it after last, I'm gonna say it's three thousand feet.
Off of Lavendusky.
From, uh, yeah, from Lavendusky, under the loop, and then up the text that right away. And then that's where they're gonna connect in.
Okay, that's great. You don't need to change the presentation for me. Um, thank you.
All right. Thank you all. And we can go back if if you'd like. I end up going too fast here. And then we have the land lease community, so the expansion of. Move on it, a state's mobile home park. Which. Was also approved at first reading. And so just a reminder where that's located, and so this would be. Uh. Hundred and roughly a hundred and thirty acre expansion. Really doubling almost. The footprint of the existing park. Of course, you can see that on the left. And then on the right, and so you can see it makes a ton of sense. For that use, you know, for them to expand. Uh, rather than trying to squeeze other uses in there next to an existing mobile home park. Uh, but it's a, you know, learning, uh, future. Uh, arterial and collector. And so just, I really wanted to focus in terms of the conditions. What are in purple? Are conditions that they've agreed to implement. That were discussed. At the workshop. Last week, so you know, the maximum density of seven units and you all were told. They were, they're proposing less than. Uh, less than six. Or is it less than five? But either way, that matches what is in the RV park. Uh, requirements, you know, so it. It it just, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for the density of. Um, you know, of a. Land lease community to be lower than what's allowed by, you know. By the RV park or vice versa. Uh, minimum distance of twenty feet between. All units on all sides, just clarify, since we don't have lots. And that was kind of a a standard that, uh, I believe Dale, the applicant. Uh, one of the owners who was there at the workshop. Uh, that he recommended. And then they'd also agreed to the minimum, the eight percent recreational areas, you know, and that. Also would match what is in the RV park. Requirements and so. Just to, when you're comparing the two to say, yes, they are different. But does it make sense to have lower? Recreational standards for a permanent community. You know, like a land lease community, mobile home park, uh, than it would for an RV park and. Either way, they they agreed that they can make that happen, so for them, it did make sense. So and you'll, the other conditions, you know, you may be familiar with them, but includes the landscaping, the. Uh, other requirements for land lease communities to implement them. And, you know, minimum twenty-six foot wide private. All that good stuff. So any? Any other questions about that one? This stage?
Can I just ask, Susan, did that answer your question?
Well, my questions were not, or comments were not specific. To these two. My comments relate to. If these two pass. Think something I would like to make certain that we have on record.
Okay, so you you were, you had a question about what the motions should be?
I don't know. I don't know whether it should be motion or not. That's what, that's why I was asking. Okay, me to, want me to tell you what my thoughts are?
Right.
Okay, um, I really, with reference to these two, if they were to pass, um, I made, made myself some notes that I can barely read now. Um. I would like to have definitive guidelines relating to the distance requirements between possible future proposals. Um. And, um. Distance within. By units. With if for future possible proposals. I'd like council, uh, planning to be working on that before we address. Other. Uh, other issues, and I just want that on the record.
Okay.
So that we're not surprised, so to speak.
Sure, so that wouldn't necessarily be part of the motion.
Okay.
Apply to this, but if you. If you intend to make a motion.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not intending anything, just again, I stress, if these were to pass, I just want to be sure. That we have this. Occurring before we're faced with other issues, other proposals.
So you could say that either during the discussion before the motions are made, or if we can wait. After you can just make that comment.
Okay, thank you.
You just want to sort of basically make the. Engineers and property owners aware that. Don't be surprised if we.
Well, I know, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I'm only speaking for me right now. I don't, I I want.
That's what you're saying. I agree with.
Oh, okay, good. I'm speaking for.
Making aware and bringing us.
I'm just speaking for three of us. I'll make, I'll say this. Or some, one of you can be more articulate perhaps, since I can't even read my own writing. Thank you, Karen. And thank you, Brian.
Yeah, and then Jason just brought up that you all have, uh, given kind of staff direction. That is that an appropriate? Separate motion or just to put it on the record and where it'll be in the minutes, we're we're taking notes and. Uh, we'll be accountable for what.
And I think it is consistent with what we talked about last day.
It is, it is consistent with that, and I don't know whether the applicants will be there, but I understand from the rumor that there are other proposals sitting out there that may come forward and which is why I would like, just again, speaking for myself, that if. An applicant is out there and hears it, they understand that we're, that I'm asking. Um, planning to come up with this before we surprise another applicant.
Sure, so what you could do is a motion of direction. And that's how you direct staff. So after the the motion, if it passes, then you could. Um, make a motion of direction to staff and then just say what it is, and then if the rest of council. It's like any other motion. Um, you would need a second and a majority vote, and then that way you you've got a specific. Charge to say.
As long as Tim is not able to ban.
We can do that, but it'd be annoying.
Yeah.
Okay.
We've actually done that before. We did that, we did that with, um, renaming, um, a street after, um. River near. Okay, we don't do it very often, but occasionally, like, you know, when you want to go on record to say. If you want it a little bit more formal than I told Ren to do this, then we can do a motion of direction and you can have it on the record. And. I'll do it anyways if you tell me to do it, but, um, if you want it kind of formalized, that's a good way to do it.
I like it. I love it. I know, I already know that I like the idea. Developers and annuals are very. They may, they may get stuck if they bring something.
Right, I. I want to just be sure that we don't surprise.
Yeah.
Another developer, because I know that we have surprised. Um.
These.
Uh.
Yeah, we kind of derailed these.
Right, and we're not, that's not an attempt. We want people to understand in advance that we have concerns, or I have concerns again, and that's what we're doing. Anything else?
So since since we were talking about it though, I'm sorry, because I do have a follow-up question, just so I understand what the direction will be, ask it now, Rev, and. Uh, on, you know, at the podium. We had talked about making distances between RV parks as a criteria. Uh, and I think that Ren and Jason had talked about that. Um, as opposed to a hard number. Because, you know, we're thinking about, for instance, there's an RV park proposed out by the lake. There are obviously RV parks. Um. US Army Corps of Engineering parks all scattered around the lake, and so if there's a new one, we'll put a distance requirement that's strict. Then, yeah, and y'all could certainly do that, but I I wasn't sure if that. If if you're ready for us to come up with a number or just criteria, so.
From my perspective, criteria, I don't want to be.
Okay.
Penalized.
Just to say, hey, let's evaluate.
Yes, exactly.
Perhaps.
And and just so a potential developer knows that that there's concerns and we would be evaluating, and it's not an automatic thing.
Sure, okay, fair enough.
Susan, I think if you're gonna make a motion of direction downstairs, it. Because what you read that you wrote down wasn't more definitive, like.
It was.
You may want to adjust the language to say, and if you would like us to type something up that. That kind of captures what we just talked about, I think we could do that.
That would be lovely. I hate to ask somebody to do something between now and then, but.
Since we have an executive session, I think that'll be a little time to get that done.
Thank you.
Um, okay, thank you. We did that.
That will certainly be clearer and more articulate.
He's just one touch. Okay.
Is that the only thing you wanted to, um?
Me?
To to include in the motion of direction, or did you want to include anything else that we talked about last time?
I did not, that I remember.
Wow, I think she said distance between individual units. Is that, you got the second one?
It was, it was to be that we would. Look at a distance between individual units. We had a lot of conversation about that last time, and I don't know that we came up with anything hard. Hard and fast, but it's something I think we should address.
Are you talking about distance between? You're talking about distance between? Actual separate RV parks?
Both, separate parks as well as units within the park. Yeah.
Not the distance between the units in the park?
Both, yes.
All three?
No, that's two.
And that's for RV parks as well as land lease communities?
Yes.
Okay, true. I don't know that we talked about, or I don't recall talking about. And I thought maybe we did on land, it's not numbers.
Okay, setbacks. Basically.
Yeah.
What about the number of units within the park?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. We discussed it, but it.
That's count right now, essentially number of units, just not the actual spacing between them. So, yeah, but.
We did talk about an overall, like, is there, is there something that is too big, but we, I think we were tired at that point, and we didn't, um. Resolve that, and I think we also wanted to maybe get some perspective from. Uh, people actually.
Well, I think this perspective to me is. The size of the. Of the, of the land that the, of the future proposal might encompass.
Would it, would it be fair if the draft language for the motion said something along the lines of? Um, that that you want staff, um, to prioritize bringing back recommendations related to updates to code, related to RV parks and land lease communities? Um, that address the issues that we talked about during the workshop last week on October ten. Specifically. But not limited to distance between. RV parks and distance, or distance between these types of developments and different, the distance within the development. Like, so call those two things out, but also say, just. Have staff make a priority to bring back recommendations. Based on our conversation last, um, last Thursday. Would that be fine?
That's, if I must be it. Does that encompass you?
I think so. I was, I. I want to direct staff, but I also want to let the, especially since I know there may be a couple more that are wanting to come. I want to make sure that they are aware that they may get held up if they're bringing it this time until we accomplish this.
Exactly.
Somehow on the public.
On that, the same app for this case tonight, as well on Dairy Road. They previously asked the table, they've asked the table that again, it was supposed to be the council or P and Z. This Sunday, Monday, they've asked to table it, pending y'all's decision and any guidance for staff that may come up. They plan to make those corrections to this site plan in stride, so they anticipate what? That y'all want them to do.
Okay, I I still haven't got my questions. Um, I know we've got two items. We've got one about the actual. Distance between. Separate parks. Right? And then we have. Um, a question on the table about. The distance between the actual units within the park. That's number two.
That's number two.
Then, oh, uh, what I got from the last time that we met in special session is that there was also a concern about the total number of units. Total number of. RVs that could be in the park. Is that true? That's what I got from this. So we have three, then we have three issues, not just.
Well, there's more than that. There's even more than that, because we.
I know we have lots of these, so. But that was, um.
Well, even just related to this issue, so I I think.
That'd be on the list. I'll put those things will be on the list of.
Yes, for further discussion, there was, there was, um, disagreement about whether to. Cap a number because, you know, in terms of the market, you know, we've got density, they got. You know, they've got, um. Hundred and fifty acres, and they want to. You know, preserve a lot of open space, but they still can fit. The the other standards, fit three RV, um. Spaces at thirty or three hundred, excuse me, RV spaces in there. Then, you know, we would, we can bring back some scenarios so that you could evaluate that to to see if a. Cap makes sense.
Yeah, okay, very good.
Discuss it further, but.
We're all on the same page here.
Sure.
All right. Uh, council, staff, anything else on item one? Outside of those two cases?
Yeah.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you moving on to something else there?
Yeah. Now, this one is.
Thank you.
Number seven.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Uh, and so this is at thirty-two hundred South General Bruce Drive. This is. Adjacent to. Um, the Bird Creek Crossing Chopping Center. Also abutting.
Six.
Salmons. And so this is. A small portion of the station cottages. Uh, rental, single-family development that were approved about a year ago. The owner has been approached by. A multifamily developer, and these are actually low-income housing tax credit project. On the backside of that property adjacent to the creek and also. Uh, abutting, uh, Salmon's Golf Course. And so. They are proposing a hundred and two units. And there's, you know, the. The breakdown of how many of those units, um, need to be a certain percentage of. The average median income for the area. Which. For the record, is seventy-six thousand for twenty-twenty-three. And so here you can see just the building. And, uh, so it's five stories on the backside. And this is a PV to be able to allow for. An additional story. On the backside, and you can see it's because of the change of elevation, you really wouldn't see the additional story. That's facing the creek. Obviously, creek side elevation change is going to go down. Um, front side is four stories, which is allowed by right. And, um, this is a PV site plan and an amendment to the site plan allowing for the fifth story. And so any, any questions? We've got a number of conditions related to that, too. Including, uh, replicating what was. Done at the Gilbain, we'll call it Gilbain apartment complex. Salmon's have new G up there that we all saw in the last year. And indemnifying the city. From, if there are any stray golf balls that happen to hit somebody. That the city is indemnified, rather than putting up an expensive net. Uh, which would make. The affordability kind of moot. So, um, anyway.
And they have your Juliet balcony to add.
Yes, they they've added the Juliet balconies, just like. Just like the other one did, and we understand, we'd like full balconies, but. Uh. Juliet balconies are a lot less expensive, and they at least provide the articulation. So.
Are the balconies on doors or on when? Oh, yeah, the doors.
Excuse me.
So you can open the doors and.
Yeah, you can.
Step out.
Yeah.
You set the air conditioner on the balcony.
Yes, but not a, not a chair.
That's right.
Maybe a stool.
Yeah, and on a day like today, yeah, you open. Open your doors, have a chair halfway in, halfway out, you know, and these are senior. These are senior, um, units, so. Failed to point that out, so you know, they. They may just be content sitting there halfway in the apartment, halfway on the little balcony. With the doors open on a nice day.
You say, it doesn't make sense to put a net up?
Well, I mean, it wouldn't, so let me go back to the site plan. It's really only this portion. That backs up to salmon's. And so. What what we heard from the other developer was that that was just not. That was not feasible, in terms of, it's maybe if it's a small portion. But. I mean, it's such a, such a tremendous cost that it it just, they're not.
Was this a tax credit when they originally approached us?
No, that was a different, that that was a single-story, those were all rental kind of cottages.
Correct.
Yeah, so completely different. Different developer, same owner. They, they were approached by this apartment. Developer and. About using, um, two, ten of the rear acres.
Is this the same, same type as far as the? Tax credit involvement, the same as the one that are about tens or on the other side? On those tax credit too?
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you exactly. I don't know about salmon's, you know, which category that was in. But this is, so they are, I guess, in their preliminary review in terms of all the, you know, criteria. Uh. This one is very competitive, and so there is a good chance that it would get.
What do you think, kind of a. Log and funny show? About the time.
Uh, no, and I honestly, I'm not sure. Why not?
Yeah, that's, that's why I like them. Nor they've already come to us before, or maybe they have to get approval for the project. Maybe that's. Part of the scoring criteria. But they don't normally come through. Could be, I was just using a letter of support.
Yeah, well, it's happened the last three months, and I'm like, why I'm solo right now without the people.
So you don't know. I'm muted, photo.
Yeah, they're like all the conference, so. The director knows nothing, it's presenting this.
Is they, no, 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 please, no, go ahead. As far as tax credit. Program, is this for a future application versus a prior?
No, it's, um, it's, they have already applied.
But they haven't been yet approved.
Correct, it's preliminary, so, yeah, so I don't. I don't, maybe, maybe our criteria changed the last four months, I have no idea. But whether they are supposed to come before us, um. Jason, what do you know?
Sorry, I'm responding to text about something else.
That's all right. Whether they plan to come back before us for a letter of support.
It's not really our criteria that would have changed.
Right, yeah.
It's so, and so it's, it. And I can look real quick. I think, I thought that we had already issued a letter of support for this property.
For tax credit?
For tax credit, but if not, then, and they have already applied, then they decided to. They, and they can do that, they can apply without city support. But they would lose, I think it's seventeen total points, which usually makes a project dead on arrival unless every other project in the region also didn't get. Any city support, so the most likely scenario here, and I I will research this so that we have the answer before you have to consider this tonight, is. They either are, are getting their zoning in place before they apply, and they'll come back, and it's typically a January. Timeframe that that we see these requests. Uh, because of the application window for T D H C A, or they applied last January and we supported them, and honestly. I've slept there since then, so I cannot recall.
I don't have a man is online, but I throw Nancy Glover under the microtransit van, it don't get busted anymore.
She'll join me.
They may have approached, uh, community development, not planning for that letter of application, so I think they were talking with Nancy Glover. Where they approached us to.
Real site plan.
The site plan and subdivision and rezoning, that's where we came.
Certainly, these were a little cottage in the thing. They bring me down. Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh.
There's no resemblance.
Maybe a hundred and thirty?
It, yeah, it was a hundred and thirty, this ends up being less.
Yeah, so. Fewer units, and but honestly, they, they would be capped. At. Their subdivision entrance at, or maybe it's one fifty. Maybe they only have a single improved entrance, so they'd be capped at one fifty anyway.
That's a tough one.
You know, so, yeah, not sure what the.
They work with us on that.
They never have to.
It's to do with the remainder. But they they would be capped, so it does limit, and perhaps that does. Essentially. Yeah, kind of allow the market to ensure that what it's developing in the future is actually retail. And not more residential.
This, um. This is three thousand South General Bruce Drive?
Uh, this is. Thirty-two hundred? Thirty-two hundred.
I think, I think this is the same project. Um. You, we did, um, offer a letter of support for that in January. So if you approve this tonight, I guess, I guess whatever they had from us was good enough that if you prove this, then. Continue to move forward in the tax credit.
You have to, what, can they change it from senior? At some time in the future?
No, they cannot. Did you say, no, they cannot? They, they have to keep it that way for thirty years.
For thirty years? And it does have an elevator, elevators?
Haven't seen, haven't seen the floor plans, but yes, I mean, I I can't imagine. They have, they'd have to have elevators.
Yes. It's a vast story.
But they, they would never get a DA. But they would never get the DA.
I can't hear.
Yeah.
What does this do for ladder? We are at this location.
But y'all need one for it, sir.
Correct. Absolutely. Yeah. Anything pre-sold out of it?
Not additional.
Not additional. We have it. Yes.
It's, it's within the RV recovery area.
Okay. I absolutely do not remember.
All right. Uh, going, going from, you know, a five story, four and a, four, five story project to one that is already on the ground and you, you will certainly recognize this building on Adams. This is just to the west of Pepper Creek and near Beaver Loop. And so this building, which was built in 2016, has been vacant ever since. And I'm sure every time you drive by, everyone, what in the world, why is that building sitting vacant? I know I ask myself that every time and my wife is tired.
You're supposed to know the answer.
Tell us why.
And now I'm going to say, well, by the way, there's a new, uh, an owner, a new owner or at least a buyer that wants to rezone this from office one. Let's see. Yes, office one to plan development neighborhood service. And neighbors came out. They were really concerned about the possibility of having even just a sit down restaurant for a variety of reasons. But the bottom line is that the, uh, the, I guess, well, the applicant and buyer agreed that they wouldn't put a restaurant. So they actually have a, um, I think there's a dental office that has an option on it. They want to have a little more flexibility. Yeah. From office one to neighborhood service for small scale retail, thus their request. And because this is a planned development, we have a number of conditions that also include additional screening. Um, you know, expansion of the building by 30% or more would trigger site plan returning to P and Z and council. But number six is the big one. No restaurant use allowed. That's what the neighbors were really focused on was the restaurant. And so.
How many of them?
How many? Uh, well.
How many of them are focused on?
Let's see. So I think, I think we had four in disagreement along the, um, the oldest side back there. And they came out and spoke and, uh, but yeah, so P and Z heard them. The applicant heard them and said, you know what? We can eliminate restaurant from the post. All right. And the last one, so, yeah, so we're going to now about the narrowest, uh, no pun intended really on this one, narrowest example of a, um, a plan development. This is for townhomes that are under construction. They decided it was for a single lot, eight townhomes. And they decided that they wanted to be able to sell off each of them. Uh, you know, so to flat it into individual lots during the plating process, we realized that the mixed use townhome requirements have a minimum lot width of 25 feet. Eighteen and a half is what their units are. So that's what they need. And so this is a planned development to allow the eighteen and a half foot wide townhomes. And you can see the site plan. Um, this is compliant with the neighborhood plan because they, they're adding the sidewalks. They're doing alley loaded. So you're not going to have driveways in the front. Here they are under construction. And so you can see these are, this is parking area between the two sets. Actually, I'm sorry, that is, yeah, that's the, that's the parking area. So, yeah, this one is a very specific, uh, to the eighteen and a half foot wide, um, request.
It's just giving a variance.
It is. It is. But with, with the ability to have, you know, subjectivity, they're saying, hey, we're going to send you to Z V A.
Right.
And, and they have to, um, be able to show that they could not meet code and that's both, you know, before they start building. There, you know, there is an economic hardship allowance now for Z V A to consider from, uh, the Texas State Legislature a few years back. So that helps, but they just, they wanted to have that conversation and a little more flexibility. Uh, than just roaring on D V A and shaking off the right ear. So, but yes, this, they've been working close, closely with our neighborhood, uh, planning folks to, to make sure that this is consistent with the concepts of the neighborhood plan, even though they're not using our love where you build plans, you know, permit ready plans, because they were, our plans were not ready at that time. It was just more of a concept. But it's, it's consistent with the intent. All right. That's all we got.
I did have a chance to visit with these guys and they were very complimentary staff and appreciably, appreciative? Of all the, the work and just holding their hands in this process. Appreciate that. And I wanted to.
Good. You're very welcome. Yeah. All of, all of D R C has really been trying to help them and, and try and, you know, even though required a few extra steps to be able to eliminate stuff where we could.
They're young guys and, um, they're going to first thing or infill lots and get more lots. So I think they're going to need.
Good, good. Well, they've been good to work with.
The roof line has a little bit of articulation and that's nice.
It does. It's made. And, you know, you can't see it very well, but it's, you know, board and batten exterior.
Yes.
Will have.
Rather than just.
Will have masonry. You know, that's, that, that ledge represents that there'd be some masonry below. So, yeah. It's look, you know, it's looking fine, but it'll look much better when it's done. All right. Anything else?
Yeah. Before we go, for item one, you guys look at the first book.
Council, whenever we get in, um, there we go downstairs. Do we want to have the full presentation on items four and five, two land lease units? Or are we, can we move forward without?
Sounds good.
Everybody give us that verbiage. Just mark it standing out.
Thank you. Did you hear what you were wanting to? Or is that, does this capture what?
It does. Thank you. As long as.
Sort of. I mean, I think there's a lot to be more than that.
Be more than what?
Be more than these items. We'll get through them again.
Yeah, but look at three. I just said, look at three.
Yeah. No, that covers it.
It does.
I just want to really send the message that, uh, you probably don't want to bring one back right now because you're probably getting held up. This is the message I want to send.
Exactly.
Rather than getting here. Say it more again. I wouldn't bring one back.
Well, but this is, this is a loud and clear message, so to speak, on several levels. Thanks, Bren.
Mike, is there anything else you would prefer to talk specifically from last week's discussion?
No, I mean, not in, I didn't.
For this motion. Yeah.
Because I don't want to say, I don't know a lot of all of them that could.
Right.
Change order. Yes, but.
It'll definitely, most likely be more than just a couple things.
I wouldn't bring one forward and put it through that. It'll be on this probably and they'll probably get proposed. That's, that's, that's what I'm, that's the point I'm probably.
Don't bring no jack.
Okay. Very good. Um, so staff, thank y'all for the extra work on, where Brian and his crew goes. Thank y'all for the extra work on items four and five. I know that we kind of put you guys through the ringer on that. And, uh, Susan and Jessica especially. And I think with the extra effort, we, we will ultimately end up with a better product and better guidance moving forward. So. Thank y'all for your concern around that.
Clear for potential developers.
Yeah.
I mean, as Mike keeps saying, and he's absolutely right. We don't want to put anybody on the, have them, we don't want to drag them along like we've dragged these two people.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think your voice trailed off just a second because it kind of made it sound like you said Jessica and Susan especially put staff through the ringer. And I think you were saying, we, we thank them for the. Making sure that you wanted on the red side.
Yeah, well, that's it.
I thought he meant, I thought he meant to thank you for.
Oh, no, 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 no.
So Jessica and Susan, I would like y'all to.
Very good. Now that's.
Did last week multiple times.
Yes. But again, it's, you know, it's easy to pursue this stuff. And yes, 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 yes. And, you know, it's easier, right? But to get what we want, to perform our job as council members, that's what we're supposed to do. So thank y'all for digging in on that.
I, I really appreciate the study.
Yeah.
Get what we want in the future.
Makes you want to buy a bigger trailer.
If anyone is interested in that, I do have one for sale. I know how much you like them. We did not last two months. We are not RVing. Not, not yours, not your style.
Half of, or half of.
It's just drivers.
Half of my family. Or household.
Yeah.
All right. You ready? Well, speaking of council being backing staff, y'all got to get out of here. We're going into the executive. No, item two is to receive an update from the city attorney regarding, uh, paying your concentrated litigation. So I will close the regular workshop at four 12 and open the executive session. Uh, so the city council, uh, can enter into executive sixty five, this attorney on senior concentration litigation. The evidence community, Texas government, 551, number 71. We will conduct a private consultation with its attorney on matters of the duties of the attorney to the city council under the Texas Department of Rules of Special Conduct. Like the state bar of Texas, thoroughly comprehensive, Texas law, local government, 765.